Good morning. Today is Wednesday, March the 17th, 2021. Notice is hereby given that there is a regular meeting of Commissioners Court of Grimes County, Texas to be held on this day at this time, 9:00 a.m. We're at the Grimes County Annex Building, 114 West Buffington Avenue, Anderson, Texas. I would ask that you please rise for the invocation, remain standing for the U.S. and the Texas pledges. Shall we pray? Father, we thank you for this day, dear God, for the blessings of this life. We thank you for the opportunities that you give each and every one of us, whether it's the opportunity to serve, to be served, Father, we just thank you. We pray, dear God, that we check with you on the decisions that we make, that we gain our wisdom from you and our guidance from you, Father, to help us do what is best for the citizens of this great county of Grimes. Father, we ask that you be with the leadership of our state, with the leadership of our nation, and, Father, we would pray that they too would come to you for their direction, their guidance. Be with the citizens of our county, watch over them and keep them. Father, we thank you for the refreshment of this rain that's come through, and we just ask that you continue to be with us and keep us safe. It's in Jesus' precious name that we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. Would you be seated, please? I have no public comment, request forms, but Commissioners, I always want to extend the opportunity to you. Do you have any comments or announcements that you would care to make? Once, twice? With that, hearing none, we will go to Consent Agenda Items, number three, four, five. That would be Consider and Take Action to Approve the Treasurer's List of Claims and Bills, Consider and Take Action to Approve Payroll, five, Consider and Take Action to Approve Budget Amendments and/or Line Item Transfers.
I don't have any questions. With that being said, I'd like to make the motion that we approve Consent Agenda Items three, four, and five.
Say. There's a motion before the court on Consent Agenda Items, number three, four, and five, by Commissioner Walker, a second on a tie between Commissioner Mallett and Commissioner Cox. So I'll let you work that out in a minute.
He's faster than I was.
But we do have a definite second. With that, are there any further comments? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, that motion carries. We'll go to Agenda Item Number Six, Grimes County Building Maintenance Manager, Mr. Al Peeler. Mr. Peeler, you have four Agenda Items, but we'll take number six first, and that's an update on ongoing projects, Grimes County Jail and Grimes County Justice Center.
All right. So I passed out your implement weather delay log. Obviously, that's going to go up today. It canceled out, so concrete on the Justice Center today. The building is coming along really nice. We have brick almost three-quarters of the way to the back. We are two-thirds of the building taped and floated. We have now the south parking lot, we have ord, it's on its 28-day cure. I think that's about it on what we've done. I mean, there's a lot, IT is almost all strong wire has been ran. Besides that, water, we lose water. Anderson will lose water Thursday night, about 10:00. We hope to have it up by oneish to do the water.
Oneish a.m. or oneish p.m.?
A.m.
Okay.
Then, from what Entergy has told me, that Anderson is going to lose power at 5:30 Thursday afternoon, and they didn't give me a time when it... So I freaked out, thought it was something to do with the Justice Center. Wasn't nothing to do with the actual power getting to the Justice Center. They have to increase the power in Anderson to get us power to the Justice Center. So that won't happen until Thursday. Entergy has put one pole and the transformer, and that's all we've got so far. So I don't know what to try with Entergy. I think Commissioner Cox has called them, Commissioner Dobinsky's called them, Commissioner Mallett's called them, you've called them. I don't know what to do. So we're at their mercy, and we're getting to the point where we need power. And I don't know what's... Hopefully, next week, they can plant our poles and get us power. As soon as they get us power, we're going to be ready to roll on finishing.
Have they given you a proposed completion date?
No, they won't. They have never gave us a completion date. They gave us a start date.
Any of the Commissioners that have talked to them, y'all gotten any definitive dates or anything?
No, the conversation that I had with them was getting the start date.
Right.
I mean, we got to get them started before we get that finished.
Well, I'm with you there.
Yes, that's a fact.
The only thing they would give me is they said they would be here last Tuesday, and I think they were.
Yep, one pole and a transformer.
He didn't say anything further. But I will give them a call when we get out here again today and ask them when we're going to finish.
I mean, I just need... Because we'll get water Thursday. Well, that's great. The chiller have water Thursday, but we ain't got power to send that water on through. And now we're taping them floating. That's... We're right there in a critical time. We can't paint, we can't...
Is it because they need to test the lines? They need to get water and then power the water through so they can test the lines and make sure we don't have leaks before they do all of the drywall and...
Oh, no, we need... You don't want humidity setting in on that tape and a float.
Okay, so, all right.
We're going to knock the humidity out with our chills.
Okay.
So, and you got, and you got fine finishes like some wood. We can't do any of that because you put that in there, humidity will go whoop, and...
I didn't understand, I didn't know if they had to do something when the lines were pressured that can then test for leaks.
Absolutely.
And you do that before you sheet rock it up.
Yeah, all that.
Okay.
That's all in a combination of, you have five or six crews out there, and one's going to be the plumbers, and as soon as the water hits, they're going to start looking.
Right.
What we really need is the power to get, pressurize it to the building. You're going to get some water into the building just for, with the pressure of the water out of Anderson water. But that's not going to, if you got a high-pressure leak, that's not going to show it.
Who's your contact, Mr. Bennett?
I don't remember the guy's name. I got him in my phone. He's kind of interim over this area out of Beaumont.
Okay.
So, yes, sir?
Is there any type... We're going to have two services down in Anderson for a short period of time while they're doing the water and possibly the electricity. Is there anything, public service announcement that's going to go out and notify people?
Okay, so Anderson Water has already hung in the Anderson door tags, is what I was heard, was told.
I haven't seen those yet, but...
That's what I was told.
I think that was their plan.
Yeah, that's what I was told. Entergy, I'm going to tell you, Entergy runs at their own accord, and they'll do whatever the heck they want to do.
Well, maybe there's enough people watching this that...
I'm hoping, that's why I brought it up.
So that's this Thursday, tomorrow night?
Tomorrow night, 10:00 to oneish. You know, I don't always want to give up in case something goes wrong, but we got everything built, ready to go into the ground. But otherwise than that, everything's going good. We're at a critical stage of power. You're going to hear me say that, I guess, until I get power. But that's it there. Is there any questions on the Justice Center?
Do you know what your, is there a proposed planned start moving date?
No.
Okay.
Not yet. The one day I, one date I had was June 6th, but I'm sure that's...
Yeah, we know that got pushed.
Because of weather and because of Entergy now.
Sure.
Entergy's holding everything on that.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir. Any other questions? Moving right along, jail, jail is still on hold because of CDC measures. Yes, our governor unmasked us, but that don't include housing, the jail. They don't, they haven't cleared us to let any contractors back in. So that's where we stand on that. Yeah, any questions on that?
Compliment you on your glasses.
Accent my eyes.
Yeah, we're going to mention that, too.
That's enough. You want to move on to the next agenda for me, Judge?
Let's go to Agenda Item Number Seven, Discuss and Take Action to Approve County Property for Auction, I saw attachment number seven.
Let me explain what this is. Normally, you would never see me bringing an auction this light to you. I have a new staff that I'm training, and to do a overall, a huge auction like I normally do, I wanted to keep it small so I could teach them how to do some of the paperwork and what's involved of me bringing it to Commissioners Court and what. I can break it down into little lots. So this is more a, yes, it's stuff that we need to auction off, but it's also a training method for me in the, in the maintenance department to let them know and see what all goes into just auctioning one little item off. Yes, sir?
So I noticed on the list, there's...
I'm sorry. Go ahead, no, go ahead.
The majority of the items don't have an asset number. Are we working towards getting those, the things that are being bought of late recently, are we working towards getting those cataloged so that we know what assets that we have?
Yes, right now, yes, we are. Right now, we have the number of chairs, the number, like it's a number of items in that specific department, but we will, we are working on tagging.
Commissioner, I've never been part of that. I just took, kind of got this gave to me when I first started because we had a shed full of stuff that nobody knew what was in there, and I just took it over and it's just carried on with me.
Well, I think one of the issues, it's just been over time, departments buying their supplies, and some of them they should have been... Didn't get that, but we're working for that.
So what you guys don't see after this, the auditors in my department, this is for you guys, and then when we put stuff up, they'll get a copy of this, which Jesse gets a copy of it anyhow. We'll put a copy of this. It went two years. And then, when we put the lots together, we design, we put all the information together of what was sold, and then we put this information with that lot, and then we give it to Lisa so that they can, and if it has an asset tag, we write it down. Our stuff doesn't have asset tags. Any questions on that?
I'm going to approve the county property for auction. Second.
Can I make an amendment, please?
Let me get first and second and ask for discussion. We have a motion on Agenda Item Number Seven by Commissioner Mallett, a second by Commissioner Dobinsky. Comments, Commissioner Cox?
Yes, sir, I would request or make an amendment to the motion that the proceeds return to the general fund, please.
Do you agree with that?
Yeah, I don't, yeah.
With the proceeds returning to the general fund?
Always have, correct, Jesse. I've never, yeah.
Is it okay with you, then, that we don't have that amendment?
Sure.
Okay. Again, on Agenda Item Number Seven, we have a motion by Commissioner Mallett, a second by Commissioner Dobinsky, is a further discussion. And hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, that motion carries. Number eight, Discuss and Take Action on Choosing Bid for Replacing Proprietary Control System at the Law Enforcement Center, see our attachment number eight.
Okay, on that, so you have the three bids, and this was a long, drawn-out, I've never in my life been like this. I set S3 is Sustainable Security Solutions. I set up an appointment to show them the jail. I never heard from them. I called back, they said, oh, yeah, yeah, we'll be there. They never showed up, so that eliminated them. Southern Folger, I left them three messages, never, never got a call back. So then we went, the sheriff and his jail staff went to conference, and they brought back the bid cornerstone that you have. It's out of my budget. I don't know that they're any better than the other two that we have. Their base proposal was 119. In my, in my professional opinion, that's not the one we need to go with. Sedaptic, Sedaptic and Stanley are the two that you, that, out of the three that you have up there. I want to give you some background a little bit on how I came to choose who I would suggest we go with. We're, we have a system right now that's proprietary, and what that means is when we have a problem, just, just not everybody will work on them. You got to call the company. Well, the problem with ours is the proprietary...
Proprietary.
Proprietary company that put it in, in 2011 is no longer in business. So there's nobody to work on their system. So Sedaptic is a small company. They're all proprietary. They're eight weeks before they can even start us, to even start looking at it. They say they have a lifetime warranty, but a lifetime warranty is null and void when they're out of business in six to seven years. I like them, but I don't like them to put, to put the risk of accounting in 10 years to have to redo this. Stanley, same, about the same amount. I did some research on Stanley. Stanley is everywhere. They're everything. Stanley Screwdriver, Stanley Air Conditioning. So I then went to Greg about the software, which is Wonderware, because I'm not familiar with software, and Greg said Wonderware is top-notch, correct? So it's in my professional opinion that we would approve this Stanley bid just because of no difference in work. One's from Waco, Sedaptic's from Waco, one's from, Stanley's from San Antonio. The proprietary, golly, that scares me a little bit because I don't want to put us in a situation that we have now. And me working on this, it's not something that I work on every day, and it takes me a little time to figure out where they wired this to that, and we're running on borrowed time right now. I can tell you that.
So your preference is Stanley?
My preference is Stanley.
The difference in price between the two, Stanley's $97 higher?
Yes.
And then we have an option for...
The additional warranty.
The two-year warranty at a cost of $3,300.
I, 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 this goes against everything.
Does Sedaptic offer an extended warranty at an additional...
They do a lifetime warranty.
They do the lifetime warranty for the $90,000?
Yeah.
Okay.
The problem with that is, again...
How long do they live?
How long, I mean, one more pandemic, one more this, one more that, does that put them out of business? And I don't want to put, I don't personally want to put us in there. On the warranty, I, this is, this is going against everything that I preached. I don't believe, that's, that's only for a year. You get a year warranty. So if you put another $3,200 on it, it'd be two years. I'm, I'm, I don't see any value in that unless you guys want it. I can cover it, I just assume not cover it, but I can cover it if that's the way you want me to do.
Cover what?
The cost, the 3,200, I can cover it, I just assume not to, but I can, because all this money will come, it's coming out of my budget. There, I'm not asking you for any budget request, anything like that. I, I have switched my money because we didn't, we didn't have as much extensive problems in the lift station that I thought we were going to have.
Right.
It was a preventive maintenance issue, but after I got down to it, I found out what we could do to change it. I can shift that money to this and... Commissioner Walker, it looks like you've got questions.
Well, I'm just wondering why you wouldn't want an extended warranty on such a large amount of money that we're spending, and it only comes with a year's warranty.
Well, it's not that I don't want it, I just, I've wrestled with this because I'm Mr. Warranty. Everything has to have a warranty. I can't see, and I could be totally wrong here, Commissioner Walker, I'm, to be honest with you, I can't see what I'm warrant. This is a lot of software and a lot of control modules. Maybe on the control modules, that's what the warranty would cost, but anywhere that I've checked, control modules don't really go out that often from everything that I've researched. The only thing that I've seen go out from research and from what I'm doing over there is a power supply, and a power supply is 90 bucks. So...
You could buy a lot of 90, $90 for 3,200.
Yes, sir, but if this is the way you want to go, Commissioner Walker, I'm not against it totally. I just, it's, it's a lack of, Commissioner Walker, it's the lack of knowledge on this system. I've did so much research in the last six months on this to try to get myself up to speed. If you feel comfortable, we'll vote, we'll vote for Stanley and with the extended warranty. It does not matter one way or the other. I just, it's a lack of knowledge, and you, that's on me. But never did in my life think I was going to be taken care of, jail doors.
So any, so anything that goes wrong the first year is automatically covered under their one-year warranty?
Yes. But, I mean, if we want two years, I'm, I'm okay with it. I just wanted to let you know that I'm...
Let me ask this, would it be an addition, would it, an additional, would it be a total of three years?
No, that's why they put would be two total years.
Okay, so it doesn't...
It's that one year.
Okay.
And that's...
So you're paying that for one year?
Yes, yes, ma'am. And I'm okay.
But you only get value for that if that breakdown occurs in the second year.
Yeah, yeah.
Because the first year's...
The first year's already covered.
First year's already covered.
So we're only getting value out of the 3,300 for the second year?
Yes, and if nothing goes wrong that second year, this is, in my mind, how I'm processing. If nothing goes wrong in that second year, you, we've just pushed off $3,200 that we'll never get. I understand that's with any warranty, but it's just, for some reason, I can't, it's lack of knowledge, I can tell you what it is. I know HVAC, I just, I just don't know how often, and for, for the research that I've done, nobody has really come up with anything goes out that often. So I'm okay either way, I really am. You're buying me, I'll be honest, you're buying me security for that second year if that's the way you guys want to go.
Well, what's, so it talks about equipment, parts, and do we even know what those are? We can't repair those ourselves.
All right.
Generally.
What's that? Sorry, I, you know. Okay. If you got some?
It's, the parts he's talking about are like, it's a whole door unit, so you literally pull it out of the door and replace it with a whole new unit, so it is...
How much does one of those units cost?
The power supply, the stuff he's talking about, $90.
Right.
The whole assembly that goes in the door costs $90?
No, 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 no. You have circuit breakers, and then you have a software unit, and then you have a power supply that, power supplies the power to the door, everything, the door, on select doors is 110. On other, most jail doors are low voltage doors, so you have that. I got all that, I understand that, but I don't understand the software modules that do intercom, that, I don't know that part of it. I know the wiring and all that. I believe you, the warranty will cover the main software, and I can't give you a cost on that, but I'm, it's going to be up there, I'm sure, because it's...
I don't, I don't, I read, I don't think it covers the software.
No, the module, software module. You have to have something to say, okay, it's intercom, it's door, going back to the, the control panel itself. It's, it's an intricate system, and how we're running now is, we got really lucky that I found an electrical panel.
Well, this is just observation, I can go either way with this, I think. Commissioner Walker makes a great point. We got $90,000 and seems to be lack of knowledge about this system, and previously, we have wanted warranty service with most of the times that we have.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And we know a lot about those services.
Absolutely.
This is one we don't really have a whole lot of knowledge about, and I don't know that neglecting the warranty... This is one we don't really have a whole lot of knowledge about, and I don't know that neglecting the warranty, I don't know.
I'm okay with it. Let's do the warranty. I'm, I'm okay, I can, I, I got it, and I understand that. I've just been wrestling for that one year, that's a lot of money, but I'm okay with that. I, I'm not, you're absolutely, your point is stable.
Yeah, but look at it in terms of in two years, if you had to replace it, we're back to ninety thousand versus.
Yeah, absolutely, I'm, I'm with you. If you guys want the warranty, I'm all about it. That's why I had him put it in there, because I'm the warranty guy. But I just wanted you to know that this isn't my strong suit. I'm, I'm learning it. This is just something I.
You're just being honest.
Yeah.
Do you, do you have a budget to cover the warranty?
I do, I, I do. I'm just gonna, uh, yeah, I do.
There are no further comments or questions. I move that we approve the county proprietary, proprietary, excuse me.
Proprietary.
Proprietary system for replacement without the warranty.
Without it?
Without it, without it.
And that's Stanley?
Yes, well, Stanley.
There's a motion before the court by Commissioner Dobianski, seconded by Commissioner Mallett. Further discussion?
Yeah, I, I would have liked to seen that with a warranty because, like you said, you're not familiar with it, you don't know what you're warranting. We're spending ninety thousand dollars and ninety-seven cents. Year two, this goes out, we don't know, on the stand, we're back to ninety thousand dollars versus thirty-two hundred dollars.
I think that.
Well, they could still work on it if not, but we'll have to pay for the work.
Right.
We don't have any versus if it fails in year three, we're going to spend three thousand dollars we could have spent on the repair.
I'm, I'm okay either way, I, I.
I don't, I can go either way as well.
Yeah, I'm, if you want to go with warranty, just make it with the warranty, I'm okay with that. I just wanted you to have the choice.
Well, the motion's without the warranty. And we do have a second, we're still in discussion.
For me, if you're buying insurance, the warranties, where do you want to go? If, after this first year, then we'll have to pay service call, calls and whatever went out, okay?
You know, I'm.
Begging amendment on yours, on this motion?
I can, but I don't want to overstep the minister over there. I mean, I understand, I could probably go both ways, but I think we've set a precedent here of a way of, I mean, point well taken. But this is insurance, it's stuff that if we have to fix it, I mean, Al may have to be the one up there fixing it if we don't have any warranty service in any year three, that's probably what's going to happen.
Right, that's what I'm doing now. And, and I, you know, I, I agree with it. It's, yeah, I'm, either way, I, I, I agree. I would like the insurance, but I'm not in a force of according to any thing they don't want to spend our money, the taxpayers' money.
Commissioner Dobianski, are you good with your motion?
Yes.
Okay. You're still good. Commissioner Mallett, with your second? All right. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Okay, we have three a's, one nay, and one abstention. Motion passes without the warranty. Go to agenda item number nine, presentation of annual report of Grimes County Historical Commission.
Switching roles. So our commission is live well. COVID has slowed our role a bunch. We went to having history lessons in our meetings so that we can spread out, we do our history lessons there. It's been a rough year on the commission. We've had, we've had two treasures die. We've had, yeah, we had Janice pass, and then Jim Bob took her spot, and Jim Bob passed. And then we had two of our committee members pass. So it's been a rough, rough year. We plan on bouncing back strong. We have some plans, we, March twenty-seventh, we have the Texas Ramblers. They are a gospel bluegrass band, if you'd say. They're going to do a forty-five minute little get-together in our park on March twenty-seventh at six o'clock, I believe. I haven't seen the flyer just yet, so. It's something that we're just testing the waters with. The Methodist Church said, because I turned the power off to the park to save money. And didn't really think that out, I'll be honest with you. So then when I wanted to do some events, I went, uh-uh, ain't got no power. So the Methodist Church said, hey, we'd like to be involved, and we'll let you run the extension cord. And I said, good deal, that's what we'll do. So it's been a team effort. We have, currently, we have forty-one members. That's a big change since I've taken over. We, we have recruited pretty stealthily. We are starting, as soon as this weather will sort out here a little bit, we're trying to get a C container so we can start tearing that old building down that's not a historical building per se. It's not recognized as a historical building. And then we'll get the container in, take the old wood out, build our museum, build up a monument museum, the old Steinhegen House, and go from there. We're, we're strong, but we're slowed up here a little bit by the COVID. Our new treasure is Steve's story. We have, we did bylaws, and that will be brought to you next commissioners' court for approval. John C. Hasn't, no. That's about it for us. If there's any questions, we'd like to see everybody there. It's a good time.
Thank you.
Okay?
Thank you.
We'll go to agenda item number ten, and we do like the glasses. Agenda item number ten, elections in Minnesota, Estrater, Lucy Ibarra. Review and approve additions and changes to the Grimes County Early Voting Ballot Board Democratic Party representation. That's our attachment number ten.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Sorry. Okay, good. So the first thing on your agenda, good morning, thank you guys very much. First thing on your agenda is just our changes to our ballot board. So anytime we have a change to it, we try to bring it before the court to make sure you guys don't have any problems with the members that we're voting on, or if someone's going off or bringing someone new to our election team. We are adding two new Democratic Party members. Both of, we're, we're going to move up from five to eight, because we have two members, the Pozyskis, who want to just step back, they don't want to be as fully involved and just be an emergency team if we need them. So the two new members will be Ines Green and Nancy Hawk. Both of them have worked for the last year with me in elections, have got good track records, they both worked. Well, Ms. Green worked for the presidential election, had no problems there. Ms. Hawk has worked other elections with me, so no issues. They're registered voters, we provided their buoy and their address, so we can prove that they are registered with Grimes County and reside in our county. So unless you guys have any real issues with adding two new members, it's pretty simple today.
I'd make the motion, we approve the additional, additions and changes to the Grimes County Early Voting Ballot Board Democratic Party Representation.
I'll second the motion. Wait, let me have a vote.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
We have a motion before the court on agenda item number ten by Commissioner Walker, seconded by County Judge Yopau. Is there further discussion? Hearing not all, in favor, say aye. Aye, oppose? That motion carries now.
Now, you do it.
Yes, you may. While we're passing that down, we'll go to agenda item number eleven. Consider and take action to approve upgrades to the current Vista contract. That would be our attachment number eleven. Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, so why are you going to turn into that? So we contracted with Vista last summer. We considered and brought for the court, and I do have two representatives from the company as well, just in case you have questions. But we brought for the court an idea to take all of our records, voter registration, and eventually election records, electronic. The sheriff's department does currently use Vista, so we wanted to stay with the current vendor that they use. So we actually piggybacked off of what they had and built just a little bit different system for us to use and scan in. Since then, we have noticed that we're having a little bit of a struggle with maintaining the rate that we're scanning documents in. What we have currently is their baseline program. It's not scanning in our older documents as well as what we thought. It's having a hard time actually maintaining and scanning the smaller documents. So same as those postcards or the smaller applications that they use in the seventies, eighties, early nineties. And those records have to stay on file for us for voter registration. So one of the things that we did was we reached out to Vista for a solution for that. And would like to move up, which is what you have today, we'd like to move up to a secondary program that is a little bit, it's going to be more of a cost for us, of course. But it comes with better scanners at no charge. They were able to secure those for us at cost with, to the company and not to us. But it allows us to scan all documents and interface with our state program, which is called TEAM. We will be pulling a major voter registration list from the state, putting it into Vista. And then basically what would happen is if I wanted to scan in Commissioner Mallett's information, I would just type in his voter identification numbers, buoy, and automatically index everything. So it's a little bit faster. What we're finding is that it's taking double, if not triple, the amount of time to scan in one or two records, and we have over seventeen thousand to scan in. Our goal was to get it done in a year, we're not close to that goal at all, and it's been a year since we scanned. So when we reached out to them, we talked to them and said, hey, we need something that's better. This is not working for us, it's almost similar and identical to what the sheriff's department has at the time. It's not working for us because not all our documents are the same size. We need something that will scan in and pull information faster and pull the image faster for us. They're going to, with this quote, they will build out a little bit different program for us, allow us to scan the documents in, pull older documents in place a little bit more, the image is a little bit better. And then, of course, we can index faster, so not having to enter so many fields at one time. So remember, right now, we only have two people in our department, so it's myself and a clerk that will actually be doing this.
Is their scanning going to be more readable than their proposal?
It is kind of tiny. With Nancy.
I mean, I appreciate you saving paper, but my goodness.
It is busy, tiny.
What is that, a six?
So, yes, scanning is more readable, it's a better image. We, we like it, we did try it out a little bit and did a demo with them, and so it does work out a little bit better. We do like that. Now, when it comes to costs, so money's a big thing with us, and I worked with Jessie and her team to figure out, can we afford this, is it going to be additional charges on our budget, because we don't want that. We strive to actually give money back to you guys at the end of the year if we can. And so far, we've been successful for the last two years to do that. The cost for a normal program is a little over twenty-two hundred, that's what we pay now. This would increase us to a five thousand a year contract. With that, we can actually cover the entirety of the contract through my Chapter nineteen funding and through my election funds. So my election admin that I charge for, I charge a ten percent fee for entities to host an election for them, like our cities and schools, I can use that and our Chapter nineteen to fund this, and it won't actually come out of my regular budget at all.
So if I can barely read this, this is like thirteen thousand, seven fifty?
Yes, that's the.
So re-quote, restate the numbers you just stated?
So those two costs, the twenty-two, we pay our yearly contract fee.
We're currently paying twenty-two hundred.
Yes, it will go up to five thousand. This thirteen thousand cost is the initial installation, training, remote contest, and that we do have in our current.
So it's kind of your installation fee, so to speak?
Yes, it's our initial, and we do have that in our current budget that we set aside for this.
Does this cover the first year of the five thousand, or is it five thousand more?
It covers the portion, the twenty-seven fifty for these new automations is covered in the initial year. Good, yeah, because I believe we already paid the initial. Right, rear licensing, that's correct. Yes, yes.
When does our two thousand expire?
That expires every August.
Every August, so, okay.
So about the same time as our other contracts.
So when do you want to implement this?
We would like to start this within the next two weeks.
So do we get any credit for the two thousand that we've already paid?
That's for the initial, initial software they're currently using.
Right.
This would be for the, the automation, so it's, it's.
But what I, what I'm getting at is we'll have April, May, June, July, four months of our two thousand.
Correct, right, 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 that would be, that would be separate. If we, if the county would like to prorate, prorate that or, or combine those invoices, then yes, we can definitely do that. But as of right now, it would be two separate invoices.
Something to remind you guys of, so yearly, we were paying a contract fee of twelve thousand, a little over twelve thousand for VOTEC, which is our voter registration program. We dropped that program in December to save a little bit of money, so that's why we've got, I, I hate to say not extra. Jessie, don't, don't, she's like, don't say it. We don't have an extra, but we do have remaining, because we were able to drop and save that twelve thousand for this year. So we do have some that we could use, that I may ask for any additional.
Lucy, I have a question. So after they scan all these, are you still going to retain the hard copies?
Yes, we will have to retain them, we're just not going to store them in office, we're running out of space. Right. We're going to move things around and kind of clear their storage a little bit, make it a little bit easier. But we will store them alphabetically and by date order, so that way we can pull the regular documents at any time.
And so will the images actually be in TEAM?
No, the images will be in Vista, so they'll be maintained back to our two servers and the additional server space that we purchased.
Fine, thank you.
So in summary, the budgeted money is already there to cover this, or dedicated funds is already there to cover this?
Yes, absolutely, there's no additional cost, and we will not have to come out of budget, as a reminder, for next year or any continuous years.
But now you're not going to give us thirteen thousand back at the end of the year?
No, no. It'll be more than a dollar at the end of the year, but not, not, maybe not thirteen thousand out of that line item.
I move to approve the upgrades presented to the current Vista contract.
There's a motion before the court on agenda item number eleven by Commissioner Mallett, seconded by Commissioner Dobianski. Is there further discussion? Hearing not all, in favor, say aye. Aye, oppose? Motion carries, congratulations.
Thank you very much.
We'll go to agenda item number twelve, Grimes County IT Director Greg Cannon. Discuss and take action to approve a six-month agreement between Darktrace. I tell you, these software companies, just spy, Darktrace, and shoot you in the back, and, all right, let me start over. Agenda item number twelve, discuss and take action to approve a six-month agreement between Darktrace and Grimes County in the amount of seven thousand, five hundred, sixty dollars to install a security monitoring appliance to protect the county against malicious hacker activity not covered by antivirus solutions. Mr. Cannon, please explain.
Good morning, commissioners and judges, my name is Greg Cannon, I'm the director of IT for Grimes County. What this proposal I'm bringing before you today, let me give you a little bit of background about Darktrace and that technology, and why I'm proposing that we use it. Currently, we have some of the best antivirus software around. As you can tell, for the last three years, we've not been breached or, or had any problems with antivirus. No malware attacks, no ransomware. And that saves us potentially a tremendous amount of money in time per year. There was a virus that was released about six days ago. And just in six days, in Texas, that virus claimed thirty-four million dollars in ransomware from agencies in the state of Texas, just in six days. So the efforts of the attackers are not getting less, they're getting more and more sophisticated. It's going to be an ongoing thing that we'll have to live with for the rest of our lives. There's big money to be made in ransomware attacks and malware attacks, antivirus attacks. Right now, we're using technology called CrowdStrike, our antivirus software, which protects us from what they call signature-type attacks. They recognize the file, they know it's malicious, they know the source where it's coming from, and they can block it and stop it. What Darktrace does is takes a different approach to the other side of what hackers do, and that's behavioral analysis. So if you've got somebody that's trying to hack in your network from the outside, they're, they're trying to come in through your firewall, they've got a hold of somebody internally that has a thumb drive that they plugged into their house, and now they've plugged it into their house. they've plugged it into the office, and now that thumb drive has a virus. They've brought it to the office. Darktrace attacks or tracks that type of attack, and they watch to see what the behavioral is of a user. You know, all of a sudden, this user never sends attachments. All of a sudden, it's sending attachments. Did they mean to send those attachments? Are they maliciously doing something intentional? Or is their computer infected and it's sending stuff out to some foreign country?
Excuse me, Harry, would you ask him to hold it down out there, please?
So it looks at it from a different standpoint. And we've been running the appliance for about two months on a trial basis, and it's pointed out some very interesting things. We haven't seen anything that's tremendously malicious other than people trying to attack our firewall. Luckily, we've got, we've been practicing best practices to keep those individuals out. But it doesn't mean that at some point there's a patch that needs to go on our firewall that doesn't get applied in a timely manner, and hackers take advantage of that and come in. There's been some very significant breaches in security across the United States in the last three or four months. SolarWinds was a big one that got hit, and SolarWinds is used widely in all government installations. It's a very good product. We actually use it, but I kept our products up to date, so we weren't affected. But most of the governments in the United States issued a mandate that SolarWinds had to be pulled from all their government computers just because of the impact that it caused. Microsoft Exchange was another big one. Luckily, we're not affected because I opted to put Exchange in the Microsoft cloud. They handle all the security for that. None of that was breached. So what if we would have had an on-premise Exchange? We could have been directly exposed as well. So security is a thing that I probably lose mostly over the night. If the internet's down, you know, that usually can be brought back up within a few hours, and it affects us. But if we get a breach, that can be catastrophic to us. And so I constantly look at technologies to make sure it's protected. So Darktrace is that product that covers the other side. CrowdStrike covers our antivirus, the signature markings, attachments in emails, et cetera. Darktrace covers the behavioral. Does it see somebody trying to attack? Where are they coming from? How can we stop that attack? Has somebody already been breached, and now their computer's sending stuff out? Or do you have a malicious employee that's doing something they shouldn't be doing? It tracks the behavioral side of how antivirus or how malware attacks and those kind of things happen. So to give clarity on this, this 7590?
60.
7560? It's for the next six months for us to basically have this product in-house. Now, going forward, starting in October, it's, they originally came back at 72,000 a year. I've locked them down to about 38,000. So going forward in October, we would have to pay 38,000 to have the full product, the full suite of the product. Right now, we're just testing one part of the product, which checks email and checks attacks from the firewall. The new product will cover six different areas of our network, and it's 38,000.
Are you able to eliminate any of the software that we're currently purchasing if you got the full suite from these guys?
No, we wouldn't be able to get rid of CrowdStrike or anything like that, and I don't have any other software. This is very specific-oriented software. Now, I don't want to make it sound like, this is like, I spoke to the Judge briefly about this. This is more of an insurance policy more than anything. When AT&amp;T, along with Lucy, came in and did a statewide audit of our network and our elections network, AT&amp;T said, of all the counties our size, they thought we were probably the best protected. So that made us feel good that the measures we have been taking are making a difference in making sure that our users are protected. I know we bug you guys all the time about we need to get on our computer to do updates and things like that. So we take a lot of proactive measures, Andrew and I, to make sure that the network is protected. So having said that, I don't want to come before you saying I absolutely mandatory have to have this. I'm just trying to bring awareness that there are two sides to the hacking world. You've got the stuff that comes in via attachments and phishing attempts, things like that. Then you also have the behavioral analysis where hackers are trying to hack in your network, and you need to act, you've got to stop that. So I know it's a lot of money. Is it absolutely mandatory required? No, it's just more of an insurance policy, so.
Do you have the 7560 in your current budget?
I can probably, I was talking to Jessie last night. I've got some projects that I can probably push out until next year that will cover for the six months. The problem is, they're not going to give us six months unless we commit to a yearly of doing 38,000 a year. Now, we do year-to-years after that, so.
Can I add something real quick here?
Yeah.
He was talking about the AT&amp;T when they checked over our network, said we were really secure, all that stuff. That is, the stuff he's proposing now is the one section that we don't have anything in place currently. Now, whether or not we feel it's an issue that we're afraid of or not, it's just, like you said, this is a completely new section that we don't currently have anything in place for.
Yeah, it's real hard to see. I can see from a firewall standpoint if somebody's trying to attack our network, but I can't see the full realm of what they're doing. Where with this program, I can see what they're doing, where they're coming from, what they're trying. It compares their analysis to other sites that they've tried to attack. It's a global environment, and they can see, well, this same perpetrator tried to do these same things on this side, and this is what we found. It's a very complex, it provides a tremendous amount of information. The great thing about it from my standpoint is that it can run autonomously. So with the short staff that we have, this thing can basically, with its artificial intelligence, kind of run on its own. And you can set grammars that say, when you see these kind of things, stop it. When you see these kind of things, alert us, and we'll stop it. So it doesn't require somebody sitting there constantly monitoring and managing this. It'll spit out alerts, it'll spit out reports of what's going on. So I don't want to scare the court into saying, hey, if we don't have this word severe danger. I'm just saying, if we don't do it now, we probably need to do it sometime in the future. I think it's a critical component to the overall security of our network, but I just didn't want to give them a dire message about it.
So am I understanding that in order to get the 7560 price for six months, are we having to commit today to the 3,800 annually?
Commit by the end of this month. That 7,500 is a discounted price to let us have that one piece for six months with the agreement that we will go year-to-year with the full suite for 38,000 starting in October. So if it's declined by the end of this month, then we send the appliance back. There's no fee charged or anything like that.
Jessie, I don't know that we can legally do that, can we?
So you don't know the revenues for next year in your budget? That's during your budget process. So my question was, is could you send it back? And if court decided after we look at the revenues, where we stand, and then they decide that that's something that they want to go with, could you just start at the beginning of October and not sign it right now? Not do the six months right now? Would you still get that price?
I think so.
If you can't commit those funds.
Right, because they understand, they work with government agencies all the time. They understand the budget process for agencies. I think, I'll need to confirm that, but I think the commitment would have to be done by the end of this month. But we don't have to commit to the 35,000 in October. In other words, it just kind of locks in the price that says, after the six months, then if approved in the budget process, then this is what it would be for 2022, the 38,000. So we don't have to, in other words, if during the budget process, they say, look, we don't have the 38,000, then we're at no obligation to Darktrace. We just send the appliance back at the end of six months. But I confirm that, because they understand the budget process.
Because what I thought I heard was, we don't even get to try the basic for the six months at this 7,600 if we don't commit to the October 1st.
I think what will happen is they'll let us keep the unit for the six months, the 76, but come October, we would be required to pay the full price if we didn't agree to the proposal now. Otherwise, we send the unit back, or we start a new contract that would be the full price. I confirm that with Melissa, find out.
Yeah, if you were to, because it kind of sounds like they're trying to get you to commit now for the next year. And so if that's the case, I would advise against that. And I would bring it back before in your request, in your budget request for the year.
Yeah. I'll find out, but I have a call, a call with her today, I think at 11:00.
I tell you, the thing that's aggravating to me is that all of the savings you keep generating for us by consolidating this, eliminating that, all of the savings that you've been accumulating for the taxpayers, then we're going to turn around and spend it on something else. And I know, like you say, it's an insurance policy, but, well, if they ransom dust for $34 million, we can just go ahead and turn out the lights, lock the door, and everybody go home.
It's frustrating from an IT standpoint, because this is, this is stuff, antivirus, malware protection, prevent it from hacking, is nothing as a benefit to our department or benefit to the county. It's just, it's something you've got to have as a protection, and that's what's frustrating, because it, in my opinion, adds no value to what you do. It's just you've got to have it. It's like having a police officer without a pistol. It's like, he needs to have enough firearms so he can protect people. So that's what's frustrating to me, because it's the nature of the beast. Hacking has cost entities a lot of money. So companies that provide hacking solutions or prevent hacking solutions charge a lot of money because they know it costs you a lot, so.
Well, in this, in this court's cost conscious, because, you know, a couple Agenda Items ago, we just voted not to spend $3,300 for a year's warranty on lots of things, and now we're talking about spending $3,300.
Well, I do want to use a court, the perception, we are doing a lot to protect the county, and I think we've done a great job. I'm not saying this is absolutely necessary. I just want to, if we have the money, I'd like to do it. If we don't, I just want the court to be aware that we probably need to do it sometime in the future, because we, it's real hard for us to protect against that other side of how hackers attack networks and stuff. So I don't want to give an urgency that, hey, we have to do it today. I just want to let you know that if the money's there, we need to do it. But if not, it's something we need to keep on the radar.
When you first came on board, can you remember the amount we spent to clean up? The attacks we were seeing so regularly? We were seeing a lot of attacks.
Yeah.
In the beginning, when he came on.
In the beginning, we were spending a lot of time in IT chasing those programs because they were replicating across the network. As soon as we cleaned the machine and got it back on the network, it was within a few days that it was getting attacked again. These viruses moved laterally across the network, and we were trying to put programs in place to stop that. So we were spending a lot of our time and resources doing that. We weren't, we had some consulting fees, but not much. And that's when I approached the Judge. I said, look, this is out of our realm. This is, we have emo tech. This is a very dangerous virus that's hard to.
That's the one I'm talking about.
And that's when we hired CrowdStrike as our antivirus company, spending much more than you typically spend on antivirus because of the way antivirus moves. We needed something that was, I call it military-grade in protection, and that's why we went with CrowdStrike. And it's been phenomenal. We've stopped all the attacks.
So with this added piece from Darktrace, this is an opportunity at this price for you to see if it's beneficial or you know it's beneficial? I mean, what?
Yeah, that 70, you talked about the 7,500. Yeah, that's a full-functioning product that.
It's a full-functioning product.
Yeah, that we'd be able to see in six months, hey, did it find anything? Are we very well-protected? Are we not being attacked? We'd be able to have good visibility of what's going on over the next six months. So there is value to it.
But we spent, I was trying to get to the amount we spent for CrowdStrike to come in and clean the virus you spoke of earlier. We spent a good amount of money.
Yeah.
To get that cleaned, right?
Yes.
Is it a way to, that we could maybe, until he knows the answer, or prove it based upon us not being committed, not committing to the 38 if we see that it doesn't benefit us?
Right, I'll speak to Darktrace, Melissa, and tell her that our contingency is we would like to hopefully try to keep the product for six months with no commitment guarantee of the 38 come budget cycle, that that has to be approved through the budget cycle. And if they agree to that, then we could, like I said, I think I've got money in my budget that I could forebrow some projects that would cover the 7,500 to see how well the product's going to work for us over the next six months. And then during the budget cycle process, I could give a report on how the product did, what it found, et cetera, and we can make a decision that we either think it's worth it or it's not. We'll go from there.
And so this is a full suite at this price, 7,560?
It's, it's not the full suite. It has two components, three components of the six.
Do you know why they don't let you test all six?
The two main areas I asked to cover were infiltration from the outside network side. The other was email.
Okay, okay.
And so they structured the package on the two key areas that I probably need to address. Sure. So if the court grants us, what projects would G and four go do?
Good question.
I've got some network switch stuff that I need to replace in like the JP3's office and in the sheriff's phone closet. We've got about $8,000 in switches that we need to upgrade.
Craig, did you forego another project that we're going to have to budget or look into budgeting for fiscal year '22? What was that one that you?
That one was, I have to go back a little bit. I can't remember off the top of my head.
Was it the archive social, ten social media accounts?
No.
Okay. Okay, it says foregoing the upgrade of network switches until October. So I think in order to do the archive social, you are foregoing the upgrade of your network switches.
Yeah, but it seemed like there was, I found someplace else. I have to go look at my budget.
Is there a project to try and pull the land to this building?
No, it wasn't that one.
I was just trying to see, because when we forego those, then we have to look into increasing the budget next year for those in addition to. So I just want to make sure we're transparent on how next year's budget.
I'll double-check my budget where I thought I could remove money for this. So this Darktrace security is, you've said it, we don't have to have it, and it's not vital to the overall security of our network at this time. Is that, I think I heard you say that, is that right? I guess the way I want to say it is, if we didn't, if we didn't have it, are we at critical risk? I'd say no. If we had it, would we be in a better position? Yes. It's like we talked about, it's insurance. It's like, you don't need it till you need it. Would you classify this more important than the switches at the JP and the Sheriff's Department? Probably so. And so how do you rectify that issue at the Sheriff's Department and the JP's? You're going to kick them down the road to put this into place that we thought was, initially, we thought that the switch issues were the most important thing. Right, until I saw the breaches that happened to Exchange and SolarWinds. Right, until I saw the breaches that happened to Exchange and SolarWinds that came out in November and December. And literally, they're shutting down government entities all across the United States because of the breaches, and like the thirty-four million dollar breach that happened in four days just in Texas last week. So, it's kind of one of those things, it's like, you don't think about flood insurance or hurricane insurance until you have a flood or hurricane, everything else is important. And all of a sudden, you get Hurricane Harvey, and now all your resources are pointed towards the next hurricane. It's kind of like this. The switches are important, I'm not saying they're not important, but all of a sudden priorities get switched when, when things are brought to light. I mean, they're still important, but they just are lesser important than this one.
Have you seen any of those attempts on our network?
Uh, we, we see, gosh, we see several thousand attacks a day.
But the ones that this would address?
Uh, we've seen two, we've seen two that, that they reported to us. We had a conference over, a conference call over. Uh, nothing was breached, but we saw attackers trying specific attempts to come into our network through specific vulnerabilities, and we were able to stop them or make adjustments for them.
I might add, the county has been hit with a ransomware attack in the past, I want to say the twenty-fourteen. I've got old computer files, photographs from floods and things that you can't get access to because the county chose not to pay the ransom. It has happened to us before.
Can I make a comment as District Attorney?
Okay.
I'd just like for y'all to know that if something happened to our records, that would be like burning down a courthouse.
I know, I agree.
And I want, as far as I'm concerned, we should spend as much money as necessary to protect our internet, our.
Don't let these people hear you say that.
Sir?
Don't let these people hear you say that.
Well, I mean, it just, as I'm watching, it frightens me to think, you know, y'all want us to scan everything and get rid of paper, and then I'm like, what if I didn't have a paper and that happened? Yep, that answered my question right there, and that's frightening.
And what I'm seeing from other agencies across the nation is that twenty percent of IT budgets now are being pooled and focused on cybersecurity. So it's becoming a big chunk of departments' IT budgets.
So this is just my opinion, but I agree with these folks. Um, I agree with you. I don't agree with your assessment that it's not vital, because I believe these people have just demonstrated that it would be vital should we ever need it. Um, do I like the timing of it? No. Uh, but it seems as though we need to maybe look at that issue, because if memory serves me, and it could be fuzzy, it seems like numerous times during the budget cycles, you approach the court about other security issues that are going on within our network, and I'm not so sure that we don't need to maybe look at how we can better address those issues in a budgetary line item possibly than having mid-budget year requests to address these security issues, so that you wouldn't have to come back to the court. Because I trust what you're doing with our network, and I agree with the judge, you've saved the county a lot of money that may not have been realized by paper and other issues, but there are things that you're doing in the office. So that's just my, my opinion on it. I mean, I think it's, it's just the world we live in. I don't like the idea of having to spend it out in the middle of the year.
But if he was able to confirm that if you're signing it for seventy-five, he said he had the money to do that. And, but it's only two components of the full six, correct? And so I think it's more clarification, because we can't commit, commit those future funds, but as of right now.
I mean, I understand, I want you, it's hard for me to sit here and say, I would rather you do this to protect our network, which I would rather you do, I guess, perhaps to make a choice, but at the same time, we're still compromising some of the projects that were deemed necessary in some, I don't want to call any office less vital, but the, these are as vital as anywhere else, and we don't want to, I mean, we get behind in that area, and the next thing we know, we're having to catch up in that area.
Yeah.
As my concern.
I agree. And like I said, um, I lose sleep over the security side of things, because hackers are extremely, extremely intelligent, smart the way they come in. I've got a, a ring doorbell in the sheriff's office that's on our network, and I worry about hackers being able to get into that, be able to get into our network and stuff, so.
Just get rid of the ring doorbell?
Yeah, it's like they have a, they have a camera doorbell at Lisa Bates Station, so if the doors are closed, they can ring. But that's on my wireless network, and, uh, you know, it doesn't take much for somebody to have a thumb drive that they use at home and got infected, because they're not fully protected. There, there are so many things that I'm not doing, but I don't have multi-million dollar budgets like the county, Harris County, where they spend just on cybersecurity. There, there are so many things I don't bring before the court that we should be doing. I know, we just don't have the money. Even if we all voted, yeah, we need to do this, we just don't have the money to do some of the stuff that needs to be done. So I try to bring the most critical things that I think give us the most bang for, uh, for our, for the county, uh, and give us the maximal protection for that, for that money as well, so.
I'm gonna make the motion to let Greg Cannon, uh, generate a six-month agreement between Darktrace and Grimes County in the amount of seven thousand five hundred and sixty dollars, with the understanding that we're not obligated to initiate this software package come October one. The understanding of Darktrace that they know this is just a six-month commitment, because we cannot dedicate next year's funds at this time.
Okay. I second the motion.
Vanessa, did you get all that sorted?
Yes.
There's a motion before the court on agenda item number twelve by County Judge Joe Five, seconded by Commissioner Dobianski, is there further discussion?
I'd just like to make a request, if, if there's any way possible, Greg, you find some other savings in your budget that you might reconsider with switches and master plan?
Yeah. Okay. With that, we'll take, any other comments? With that, we'll take a vote, all in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed? That motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Cannon. We'll go to agenda item number thirteen. Chief Green, discuss and take action to approve the Grimes County Sheriff's Office to change cell phone providers. Uh, Greg?
Yes.
Don't leave. This might involve you, please.
Okay.
Mr. Green, chief, I'm sorry.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Uh, yes, this, uh, situation that we occurred, that we noticed kind of during the storm, was starting, uh, led us to start evaluating our cell phone network coverage during this past winter storm, obviously. We started losing power, and once we lost power out throughout the county, uh, radio towers and cell phone towers started becoming potential targets of losing service. What we noticed was, uh, we're currently on the AT&amp;T FirstNet, uh, service right now, and pretty much, uh, most of the towers in the county were down. You know, they're on battery backups for the last, you know, few hours, and most of the batteries are depleted and they totally lose service. Generally, when that happens, during storms, because we had this situation happen at the beginning of the year, that I brought up to AT&amp;T and FirstNet, is we had a tornado, tornado windstorm come through, knocked a lot of power out. We lost, uh, a lot of the FirstNet towers in the county, and they're not backed up on generators, so it's right now our battery backup. But, you know, I put the call in, they came out, put some generators out, and got everything back and restored. This particular, obviously the ice storm, is when I put the request in, paid with lost towers, um, you know, come put some generators out, and they were denied, so, uh, because they, they couldn't move the generators up. So that, that's a situation with, you know, cell phone coverage throughout the county was down. I talked to our, our account manager, and I said, that runs about eleven counties, so much, not some of the surrounding counties experienced what we experienced, but we experienced a lot, and, but there was nothing we could, that we did, they couldn't run the generators out. So that had me, you know, furious, because when we're looking at our radio infrastructure also, you know, we run a microwave link to the Millican Tower. Well, during the whole storm, I was in contact with the Big Blue Wax, and our Millican Tower was going down, was on battery backup, and it got to a point to where the batteries were almost depleted. They were able to get that generator up and get the routers fixed and everything, and we stayed up on our radio. But if we were to loss that, we would have lost not only our radios, but we would also had our backup phones out, and we would have had no communications between the officers in the field. So on the Big Blue Wax side, you know, I put in a request that, obviously, which is a different subject, that we need to have a backup backhaul made to the Big Blue Copper, and that way we'll, we will never lose issue there. But, uh, there are some concerns with the, the phone, so I reached out, and started talking to Verizon, and talked to some of their engineers, and all their towers, uh, in Grimes County are hardened with generators. So in event, uh, you know, another storm like that, that, you know, Verizon will stay up. And I do, I backtrack a little bit, on both storms, the one we had, the beginning of twenty-twenty, and then this winter storm that we just had, two other carriers, uh, that I know is, um, were up. You know, I was having to use other people's phones to be able to contact and start making the initial contacts and stuff, and I had to come to the office to get the things going. So, so I do know that Verizon and another carrier were up during that time and operational. So we started looking at it, I, I talked to FirstNet, they said Anderson Tower's up this year to get a generator, but it's still not including the surrounding towers. Um, and we had a couple towers in Arizona that went down, so, um, obviously, I think for the, that's as far as, you know, reliable communications, I feel that we need to switch. Um, I've been talking to them, some pricing, their pricing, um, come in, I got some quotes, it's, you know, thirty-nine ninety-nine per line for the telephones, and then it's thirty-seven ninety-nine, uh, for the Wi-Fi devices that are on the vehicles. Wi-Fi devices between FirstNet and Verizon are the same price, there's no difference there. Now, the pricing for the FirstNet and Verizon is different, because Verizon, I mean, FirstNet is, is close to the monthly bill, is about closely to, um, fifty dollars once you have taxes and stuff on it. So I think it's around forty-eight dollars, uh, per line, maybe slightly higher. But there is some differences with FirstNet. Uh, we're running, we have, we have a certain plan that allows us to have the push-to-talk, the mobile data management and archiving included in that price versus Verizon, you're just getting the basic phone price. Now, I've talked to IT a little bit, and they're looking at a potential option of moving our mobile data management and archiving over to our Microsoft, uh, situation, which could offset the cost anyways. So just on paper, without including the notes cost, I mean, including the FirstNet costs and the cost that we will be going to with Verizon, you're looking at roughly close to a ten thousand dollar savings. Verizon's also, if we act within this quarter, is gonna give us three hundred dollar credit per line if we move over, so, which will be roughly another ten thousand, fourteen thousand, well, kind of a one-time credit.
So is that twenty-four thousand credit?
Yeah, it could be potentially twenty-four thousand credit in one year, but then the next year, obviously, you won't get that three hundred dollar line credit, that's just a one-time due, fourteen thousand.
Greg, do you have any thoughts or comments that you can share?
Todd and I have been talking quite a bit about this, and I'm in full agreement with what he wants to do, switching to Verizon. Like he said, we've had trouble with FirstNet. I, I like the idea that Verizon already has generators on all their towers, there's fifteen towers in Grimes County so far. Um, they're all on diesel or natural gas. Uh, like he said, the pricing seems to be a little bit cheaper to Verizon. Uh, we'll be able to do away with two of the services that IT needs, the SMARSH and the mobile iron, uh, mobile device management. We can move that to Microsoft, like I said, I think there'll be additional savings there. Uh, from an IT standpoint, we're just looking for something simple to manage, we don't care about who the service provider is. I think it's more critical to his group that they have uptime, reliability and stuffs. But I'm in full agreement with Todd, switching it from AT&amp;T to Verizon.
Will that be all AT&amp;T phones, or just the Sheriff's Department?
We, we, from a management standpoint, we'd like them all on AT&amp;T, I mean, Verizon, especially if it's cheaper, because it's just one bill, it's one vendor that we have to deal with. Uh, I know that, uh, in working with Heather over the last couple of years on the cell phones, it's a nightmare sometimes to figure out those phone bills and whose numbers whose, and how they categorize the phone bills and stuff. So when you have one, one vendor, it makes it much easier, especially if it's gonna be cheaper overall.
Um, so the three hundred dollars per line, is that for new phones or unlocking phones or what? I mean, how are you doing that with the equipment that you currently have?
Well, that, that's gonna be for, say, like, uh, either a line, a new line added or a number that's ported into the system. So you, we still keep our phone numbers, and we'll just port that line in.
But the equipment?
But I know, I know on the public safety side, is, we, we get free phones, so we'll be switching to another phone device, and, because it, it doesn't cost us anything for phones. They allow us to upgrade our phones once a year, some devices, they just.
On the law, first side, they'll give a special Android phone that's designed specifically for them, for that, uh, first responder environment. Now, everybody that is currently on AT&amp;T, if we wanted to switch them to Verizon, for instance, you, you have a iPhone twelve, we just swap the SIM, and you'll be able to keep your phone, so.
You're swapping SIMs?
Just swap the SIM card.
So unlocking it on?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Arthur, do you have any comments on this?
No, we talked about it. I haven't seen any type of proposals or anything from Verizon stating it was just what Todd had informed you, he informed me, uh, yesterday. Um, so I don't, I don't see any issues, provided that it's potentially the same cost. Um, I know that five ninety-nine, you may have to add, so it, for the, what was that, push, push-to-talk?
Yeah, there is one feature that we're potentially exploring right now, we're not going to deploy, which will be the push-to-talk. Um, and that will be five dollars per line, um, if we add that feature to it, then that would be roughly twenty-five hundred dollars. But even with the savings and then moving.
Is that twenty-five hundred a year, I'm sorry?
Yes, yeah, twenty-five hundred a year for all forty-one phones that we have.
Right.
Even with removing the Indian, you know, Marsh, I think it, uh, will still follow within what our budget is allowed, nobody. FirstNet's told me there's no deactivation fees. The service that we're on is a month-to-month service. We've already been with the, the year, so there won't be any issues with the phones or anything like that, so.
Is Verizon the same thing, month-to-month? Month-to-month is Verizon?
Yeah, all of them should be on the DIR contract that offers the public safety payments on a month-to-month basis, and then it's still one of the phone issues.
So your recommendation is to go from AT&amp;T at the Sheriff's Office to Verizon? And IT doesn't have an issue with that? You, with your research and discussion with Todd, seems like a better deal and a cost savings?
And it's on DIR, so it's.
Okay.
And, and you are gonna go with push-to-talk, or you're gonna delay?
Right now, we're not, we're not gonna go with it. We're not currently using that feature right now, and, uh, there may be a potential time when we decide to use it, but we're still trying to kind of look at and see what the actual benefits are. Now, as long as we got a real strong radio system, um, most likely we won't use it.
So do we get enough savings this year to go back to the switches that we had to put on hold?
Uh-huh. That'd be nice, I don't know, we'll have to see.
Is that in his budget or?
That's in his budget, yeah.
Somebody's got to switch the box over to Sheriff's Office.
Well, we know that, and we take it.
Huh?
That was replying to Greg.
It can be moved. It could be moved. Surely he wants his computers to run back.
That's right.
Well, you know, we just moved money from our budget to their budget for computers. So I guess we just swap some back. In the reason, obviously, you know, we hadn't made a decision one hundred percent, but I wanted to bring it maybe before the end of the month because obviously, if we don't initiate this by the end of the month, then we, we don't know what the three hundred dollar credit is going to be. Of course, what the salespeople are telling me, this is the highest they've ever seen in a while and most likely it's going to change next quarter and stuff. I just wanted to make sure everything's on the green. We're still looking at, obviously, the archiving and I'm still waiting to quote from there. I asked for a quote from, or tried to contact another company, cell phone provider and get a message, call back, send a couple of emails and haven't gotten anything back from them. So right now, I think this is kind of directed my eye.
So I'm sorry, you said the archive. I thought IT was working on the archive with the Microsoft, is that?
Yes, but I'm not sure if they've fully tested and vetted it yet.
Yeah, we haven't fully tested it yet. We've gotten the pricing, it's less than what we pay now for archiving, but we want to test it to make sure it does what we need. We've got, we're going to get two accounts for Andrew and I since we're on the FirstNet network as well. And Todd's asked Verizon to provide some sample phones so that we can test out their phones. But the archive solution we have today would be different than the archived solution moving forward and it should be less expensive.
But the archive we had before was part of the FirstNet data, the monthly payment?
Yes, right. We were looking at changing that.
Anyways?
Yeah, once they found out about the new mobile mission device.
But until then, you have to have it done and you're getting a quote for that?
Yes.
And you don't know what, how much that is?
No, I don't know.
And so you're planning on using some of that potential savings for the archive that you're going to have to pay?
I'm hoping IT will like the new setup and we go with that straight off the bat. But if we need to, we can go with archiving until we switch over. But even with archiving, it's still fall within our budget.
Yeah, because I think today, the portion of his bill that we pay for archiving is about seven dollars of that bill per line per month. With Microsoft, that's supposed to be around four dollars per bill per month. So there'd be a net savings per line of about thirty dollars a month.
Well, but you're having to pay the, I guess where I was going with that is you're paying forty dollars and then, well, you're not doing push-to-talk, but eventually you'll probably want push-to-talk depending on your radio system, right? So you're already at forty-six dollars and you're paying forty-eight over at eight. I just want to make sure funding-wise, we're going to be okay. It's not coming back to court and asking for more funding to cover.
This is, the switch is really, is basically switching apples to apples. pricing is not going to go over, they're real competitive with each other. The only, only reason I'm saying we're going to see a savings is because we're looking at reducing some features and moving features elsewhere. The biggest savings obviously is going to come from the one-time credit.
Right.
After that, it's theoretically going to be close to the same.
And you don't know that the credit will be the same amount next month?
Correct.
Okay. Is there a motion, commissioners?
I'll move to approve the Grimes County Sheriff's Office to change cell phone providers as described by Chief Todd Green.
Second. There's a motion before the court on Agenda Item Number Thirteen by Commissioner Cox, second by Commissioner Dobieinsky. Is there further discussion? Hearing not all in favor, say aye. Aye, oppose? Rock and roll, sir. Thank you. Finally, we'll go to road and bridge engineer, Mr. Harry Walker, Agenda Item Number Fourteen, consideration and possible approval of a plat of legacy estate subdivision located on County Road Four Ten in Precinct Four, C, Attachment Fourteen. Commissioner Cox, that would be, here's your argument. Mr. Walker?
Commissioner, this is a small flat, six lots, seven acres. It's located at the intersection of County Road Four Ten and State Highway Ninety-five. These are two and three acre lots with the exception of one existing property that the property owner currently resides on is a six acre lot. We are recommending approval, they have consented to grant a roadway easement to establish the full half- driveway width along their frontage along County Road Four Ten. I would point out that Lot One, which is a lot on that intersection, is allowed to be commercial only residential. For example, lots are restricted to residential purposes. Any questions?
On Lot Six, do we require a minimum for that? He's got a little, I guess, access on County Road Four Ten.
That's for a driveway. We don't require, if it's a private road, we require a sixty-foot minimum, but if it's just a driveway, we do not.
I didn't know if there was anything for that. Size, frontage on roadway, if it's, even if it's...
He wouldn't have been able to use it for anything else except a driveway for individual property. In fact, that is currently being used as a driveway.
Oh, okay.
But it was long, you know, part of the estate property. And now we, for just for individual driveways, we don't have them. We encourage you to go to sixty feet, just in case there was something else.
If there are no other questions or comments, I move that we approve the plat of legacy estate subdivision located on County Road Four Ten in Precinct Five.
Second.
There's a motion before the court on Agenda Item Number Fourteen by Commissioner Cox, second by Commissioner Walker. Is there further discussion? In hearing not all in favor, say aye. Aye, oppose? That motion carries. We'll go to Agenda Item Fifteen, consideration and approval of two variance requests by Patricia Best related to a possible replot, a replat of property in Mill Creek Estates or Attachment Number Fifteen.
Commissioners, this is a request of a consideration of variances prior to the possible redevelopment of property. They don't have to wait until they submit a plat to request variances. In this case, the property owner, Mrs. Best, has been approached by a developer who wants to purchase her property on the condition that he'll be able to subdivide it. So she wanted to see these variances. There are two, two issues here. One variance, the property is part of Mill Creek Estate subdivision, previously planted property that was done back in the nineteen-seventies, I believe, predates the county subdivision rules. The subdivision is a mixture of lots that range from a half an acre up to a couple acres. Probably forty percent of lots in subdivision are smaller than our, you know, standard of one acre where you have public water and septic. So first variance request is to allow the one acre minimum to be waived so that they can divide this property into two tracts. Because of the situation on this particular subdivision, I spoke to the environmental group, they said, I asked them how they've handled applications for septic on these properties in the past. Regardless of the size of the property, if the septic designer demonstrates that they can lay out a proper system that meets TCEQ requirements, they will approve it, whether it's, you know, meets our subdivision criteria or not. So from that standpoint, there's precedence. The other lots in the subdivision were originally planted in small tracts. This is a little different in that they're requesting a variance to allow it to be replatted in the smaller parcels there. Again, the underlying reason for the, for the one acre criteria is to ensure that there's plenty of space to meet the TCEQ requirements for separation of well and septic and adequate space for the septic field. I'm not strongly opposed to granting this variance. The other variance is a request to waive the plating process entirely, which would be a violation of state law. We couldn't grant that if we wanted to. So obviously, that one needs to be rejected. And whatever y'all's decision is, we'll respond to the applicant, tell them what they can and can't do, and they'll decide if they will proceed with the purchase of the property and replat. Questions?
Who's real estate is that in?
That's mine.
Yours, okay. That's what I thought, but I didn't...
Where are these lots located exactly? On what road? Are what roads are located on, Harry?
This is on, um...
Mill Creek?
Yeah, it's on Mill Creek Drive. This is the first lot on Mill Creek Drive that's fully within the county and we almost didn't have to deal with it. But it's just north of the seventeen-seventy-four and just north of the county line.
I'm, I'm really not in favor of granting that with that small of acreage in there. I'm not in favor of granting that with that small of acreage in there.
Well, I believe like, like Mr. Walker said, we, we put that one acre standard in there for, you know, because there really weren't any water systems at the time. So you needed a water well and a septic system in order to keep your separation distance. And we needed that acre. And this is, and there's many subdivisions, you know, as long, but I think with that contingency, as long as it's a TCEQ, TCEQ approved septic, amidst those standards, then I don't think we'd have a problem with dividing that.
Okay.
And this, this would be, it's interesting, they have public water and the septic system. Our standard for that is one acre. These would be six tenths, seven acres.
And we do have lots in here that do have that assistance.
There are other lots in the subdivision that are that small, that smaller. And if you look at the plat, it's an old one, it's not highly legible, but it's more than, um, Smithway, if you look at the lots over there, most of those are even smaller than the six tenths of an acre. So like I say, I've got mixed feelings about it. I'm not in favor in general of granting variances. It's a sort of a odd situation.
John C., we're here, he reminded us if we do for one, then we need to be prepared to do for others. Not saying we can't do that, but...
It would hurt to kind of revisit our subdivision regulations for this type of, you know, if there, if we want to be more and more smaller lots that already have water, maybe already have wastewater or package plants or something in the subdivision, then, you know, you don't really need that one acre.
That might be an item to consider if we update the subdivision rules.
Because I think before, Andy, it was, it was to make sure we had proper, proper clearance from the water move forward.
And, and again, that's, that's a policy decision. Regardless of the size of the property, if they can't meet TCEQ requirements, we don't want to approve those.
Right, yeah.
If there's no motion, then you'll have to advise that there's very much...
Second.
Second time has passed, is there a motion?
Well, because, you know, like this one, there are actually half-acre lots in that subdivision that function properly, so I guess it would depend on...
Let's, let's table this and I'll talk to John C. about it and see what his take is on it. And we'll bring it back.
Agenda item number fifteen is tabled for further conversation between Commissioner Dobieinsky and legal. Thank you, sir.
And I'll let you know what we, what we come up with.
Okay. And Harry, if you want to bring up, bring, if it does come before us, if you want to bring a, bring a bigger plat, that'd be okay too. Or at least, is that one, I thought this was, that's the other one.
That's the other one.
I go through my handout. I'll try. Tough crowd. With that, we'll go to Agenda Item Number, or did you have anything else on the road and bridge report that you wanted to highlight?
Fifteen A.
Oh, okay.
Amendment to Agenda Fifteen A.
I don't have that one in here.
Oh, damn.
Don't blame it on you. I, I put the fifteen A. Commissioner Dobieinsky, would you read fifteen A for the court, please?
I don't have it either.
He doesn't have it.
It's a consideration of possible award of bid for Hurricane Harvey.
Oh, yeah, I do. I'm sorry.
Project construction.
That's what I had too.
That was my handiwork, by the way.
Okay. I looked for the word amended, but I didn't see it.
Line coloring was in shirree's absence, except for the part about sending out the rightest agenda.
So shirree's sort of replaceable, but not fully.
Not full.
Good news.
Okay. Go ahead, Harry.
If you recall, in January, we opened bids on Hurricane Harvey grant projects and ended up rejecting all bids because the low bid came in and almost doubled our budget.
Right.
The Hurricane Harvey grant, the total grant amount was three hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars. Out of that, the available money for construction is about two hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars. The original bid, the bid for the entire project with all the alternates and everything, the original bid came in at five hundred and sixty thousand dollars. We rejected that, went out, we repackage the project and rebid it. The first bid, we only received two bidders. This time, we did much better, received four bids. Texcon, U-Bank excavation, Fuqua, Fuqua Construction and Glenn Fuqua were the bidders this time. The total bid this time around on the lowest bidder for the total project with all the alternates was U-Bank Construction, U-Bank excavation, the amount of four hundred and nine thousand, three hundred and fifty-five dollars and one cent, which is a hundred and fifty thousand dollars less than the first time we bid it. So that part of it worked out very well. The problem is that it's still a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars over the budget under the grant. And the way the grants are structured, we have to provide benefits to all of the areas that were included in the original grant application. So if the contractor doesn't do this work, they'll fall on road and bridge to do it. I am recommending, because of our other commitments, both for the paving project, and we will be doing construction for the Hurricane Harvey grants for three of the small towns this year because of the interlocal agreements. Todd Bishop, Iowa, and Bice, will be doing their construction. I don't see how we can get the extra work covered by these alternates into our schedule because they're all due basically at the end of September, beginning of October. So what I'm recommending is that we award the complete package, base bid plus all alternates, to U-Bank for the four hundred and nine thousand, three fifty-five oh one, with the understanding and with the record... with the understanding and with the recommendation that we would then approve a budget amendment to take money from Road and Bridge's fund balance to cover that difference between the construction funds under the grant and the total amount of the bid. And that we'd have to take about $145,000 out of fund balance to do that.
When you say fund balance, is that Road and Bridge's fund balance? Madam prosecutor, thoughts?
And then with the understanding that when you do receive that income from those other three projects, that it will not go back into your budget, it will just go into revenues, stay there to replenish your fund balance?
Glad you reminded me of that. One thing I didn't point out, the three town projects that we're committed to do the construction for, we are billing them for that work. That's income. Again, because of the way the GLO structures these grants, we can't even give them free labor and have them get credited for it. So we're billing them for the labor and equipment. They're purchasing the materials. So we will have a potential amount of revenue from that that we'll receive. Also related to the Hurricane Harvey grants that would offset this $145,000 of public investment. You can see, the three towns, their grant projects total about one and a half times the size of ours. Because individually, they got each half as much as we did. We'll have substantial income there. We'll help replenish the fund balance.
So when you, you said we're purchasing the materials, right?
They're purchasing.
So you're just providing the labor on that?
But we get to charge it.
Yes, but we get to charge, okay, yes. And these are all due at the end of September, is that September?
September, I suppose. And they have quite different dates because when they sign their contracts, it's all the same basic number.
So I'm okay with the money being pulled from fund balance with the understanding that the revenue that does come in from these three projects just go into revenue and not, a budget amendment will not be prepared to increase your budget? So what'll happen, usually when you receive the money in for like scrap iron or any type, we'll come in, prepare a budget amendment, and increase your budget. With this money that you receive from doing the work for these three towns, we will not prepare a budget amendment. It will just be coded to your revenue account in fund line.
Right.
Is there a motion?
I'm going to award the bid to U-Bank excavation plus all alternative, all alternates for the Harvey, Hurricane Harvey GLO and CDB grant project construction.
There is a motion before the court on Agenda Item 15A by Commissioner Mallett, seconded by Commissioner Dobianski. Is there further discussion?
Do we need to postpone that, in that motion, that how the revenue coming in from the other projects is gonna offset the fund balance?
We're not gonna automatically just go into fund balance any revenue we get in, or is it...
Well, can we amend it to say that it's with the understanding that the money received from the three towns will just go back into their fund balance? That it will not be...
The Road and Bridge fund balance.
Yeah, I guess we'll cut, okay. I'll amend the motion to state that we'll cover the additional amount above the grant from the fund balance and any revenues from the Hurricane Harvey work that we're doing for the towns. We'll go directly to that fund balance to replenish.
Does your second still stand? All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Mallett, seconded by Commissioner Dobianski. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed? That motion carries. Part of the road and bridge report, when do your teams go to Monday through Thursday?
We started this week with daylight savings time change. When the 410s, the office, we're on half days a week. We'll come in on Fridays. Crews are working 7:00 to 5:30.
From when to when?
7:00 to 5:30. Elsewhere on the road and bridge report, they have gotten a pretty good start now on the solar project. They're building their lay-down yard. They put up a lot of signage about the construction traffic and they've got a lot of comments about that.
Positive or negative?
A lot of curiosity. If you do advance warning signs per text up, you end up with about eight signs on each approach of each road and on these gravel roads. That kind of caught a lot of people's attention. But they've gotten a good start on building their lay-down yard. The weather, they're expecting to have that project done in December. We'll see how that works out. They are up and doing pretty well. GNA is working on preparing roads for the summer paving season. Finished ditch work pretty much. Tall Pine Neighborhood, they're working on County Road 175. Getting ready to start on Breeze Wood. Trying to get those roads all, get the ditch work done and start in next week. Down the Tall Pine area, putting the base down, getting those ready for paving. We also, we just concluded our equipment auction yesterday. Pretty good results on getting rid of some old vehicles and equipment, old catalogs and things. That worked out pretty well this year.
Mr. Walker?
Yes, ma'am.
Could I get you to take a look at County Road 328? I did receive...
328.
328 off of Highway 6 for overhanging limbs and road damage. That's that short, one-mile road.
All in, all done? Thank you, sir. We'll go to Agenda Item Number 16, considering take action regarding the burn ban and authorize a county judge to signatory. I would recommend no action. God refreshed us again this morning. That's acceptable. We'll go to Agenda Item Number 17. Any updates on the strategic plan, commissioners? Hearing none. We'll go to Agenda Item Number 18. Is there a motion to adjourn? There's a motion before the court on Agenda Item Number 18 by Commissioner Dobianski, seconded by Commissioner Walker. Is there any discussion? In hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed? Motion carries.